Father North, please.
Okay. All right, Chief Campbell.
Here.
Jim Steel Smith.
Here.
Steve Eisenbrow.
Here.
Kyle Ferretts.
Good.
Bill Gallagher.
Yeah. Jim Barbie is on his way, so she here.
Okay.
Any minute. We need a motion to approve the agenda with flexibility.
I make a motion that we start the meeting with a motion of flexibility.
Yeah, motion to.
I'll second that motion to approve the agenda with flexibility.
In a second. All right. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oh, same side. Uh, we got minutes to do.
Yeah.
You know, sit here. I'll read on you guys.
Play Floyd Mary.
Right, yours. Take a note in there every time. Okay. Think we'll read the minutes first on July seventeenth twenty twenty three.
Jim. That's a long court.
So, meeting is called to order. Here Keith Campbell called. Ordered a regular meeting in the Harlem Township Board of Joint Appeals at seven forty eight. The roll call was Keith. Kim, we're all here. Mike Stan was here and like Matt Bryant is here as the public. He has means the minutes were approved by the board, changes and additions were made. Bill Gallagher made a motion to approve the minutes as corrected. Steve Eisenbrow seconded. All voted aye and objections. There's no new business report to the board. Designing Director Mike Cannon reported there were some nuisance properties currently in the township. No new applications or appeals coming to the board at this time. And no other new business. Uh, we adjourn. Steve Eisenbrow made a motion to adjourn the meeting. Kyle Ferrer seconded emotional voice vote always no objections, meeting adjourned at eight ten team. Any additions or corrections? A motion to approve as presented.
Make a motion to accept the minutes of July seventeenth twenty twenty three.
Prove as second.
Second.
Yeah, prove motion and second. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, both same side. It's approved. Then it's August twenty first twenty twenty three. Here Keith Campbell called to order the regular meeting with more of joint appeals. Mr. Campbell called the role to introduce new administrative assistant to the board. Uh, roll calls Keith, Jim, Steve, Kyle and Bill is all here. Mike Cannon was here, no public was present. Uh, we, Mr. Steel Smith made a motion to approve the agenda with flexibility. Bill Gallagher seconded. Oh, voted in a favor. Uh, no minutes to approve in the last month's BCA meeting. Uh, within this zoning director, Mike Cannon was asked for new business, no new business for the BCA. Mike Cannon begins his report sixty four minutes have been issued so far this year. Some progress has been made on nuisance properties. Dumped up property noted by board as particularly issue that needs remediation. Word suggests EPA or or court as solutions. Uh, planning committee report, Mr. Steel Smith encourages watching the recorded meetings for details. Uh, other business, the board progressed to on to discussion on application procedures. The board also discussed updating area variance checklist and conditional use permit checklist. Kyle Ferrer made a motion to adjourn the meeting. The meeting was second, motion was second by Mr. Steel Smith, Mr. Campbell called by booth voice vote. All voted aye and objections, meetings adjourned at eight forty P M. We have a motion to approve the minutes as. Brad, any corrections by anybody?
I move we approve the minutes for August twenty first twenty twenty three.
My second emotion.
Motion is second, all favors say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oh, same sign. Minutes approved. Uh, no new applications, anything new? Uh, give your reporter, yes?
No new applications, but probably are gonna have a couple. Um, I might end up having a fire ladder out to the personal Ivy Road. Tell them to get in here and do whatever they're gonna do. Uh, we've got another property that I'm expecting a uh, complaint on. That is a commercial business out around Mayfield Drive. That somebody run some commercial out of there. Uh, so I'm expecting that, which means they'll be coming in probably for some kind of a variance. And then I've stopped by a couple of times on our guy on six oh five and telling me he's coming down here. Never been home, so I'll send a letter out to him and we should have some business by next month, one way or another. All that.
I don't like business.
Well, it's good that we don't have any.
No business means it's things are going well.
They do.
He said, no, that's that's fine, letter happens.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
About uh, the the guy that is at the corner where Harlem dead ends into Gorsuch. Where he's basically installed an auto lift down. His drive down in the driveway. And he's has also now cleared, like what looks like preparing to build a building perhaps. Is that what he's doing?
He can't get. March? You got a permit for that?
Okay, so pre-me, but okay.
Yeah.
So that's what he's gonna do.
Yeah, I he better get going on it because it's not going real fast.
It's tough out there in the winter doing oil changes in the snow, but.
And that's actually his son that that works on that stuff. He is a woodworker and he wants to build that thing. He's building a whole barn in there. I see that he's brought a bunch of of dirt and will level up the ground.
Yeah.
They're working on drainage.
It looks like it.
Yeah.
But in the last week, a bunch of uh, uh, oh, let's just call them older vehicles has now appeared on the property there as well. So I I don't know if that's gonna be yard art or what those are gonna be down down there. Historically, it's only been a car or two.
Yeah.
As he's been doing the work, but now there's three or four should have lined up along the facing the Gorsuch down there. So look, I guess I would, if he's got a permit, that's a good start.
Yeah, he does gotta have a permit for that. We'll see, we'll see what happens with them. They sit there for a few weeks, I'll stop asking you follow up.
Really not. What's that?
Really not portion.
Uh, that wasn't the point.
Problem with yard art.
It's on there and run it.
Anything else?
This, we're at seventy seven permits right now tied with last year. Um, there's not a lot of of permits coming in there. There are a lot of people looking into doing lot splits right now. I've noticed I've gotten a lot of calls on lot splits coming in, so that's kind of a different night. It doesn't have anything to do with you guys, but no more business for you, but about it, nuisance properties are.
Uh, nothing about the guy wanting to do the party barn.
Nothing from him.
I give up.
And I messaged him back two or three times after he said I was gonna start doing something. He had a, but he says he emailed me. So.
He did mow it the other day.
Did he? There you go. But I guess that's a start.
He mowed it and he's out there walking around, so. He's an absentee owner, so.
Yeah, yeah, he lives in Westerville. We do wanna keep an eye on Ivy Ivy Drive though, because they have those pillars built, which are supposed to be the same thing that was there before. And he's not gonna do anything on the sign because he knows he's gonna come in and see you guys, but I'm I'm afraid he might try to sneak a sign up here at some point in time, so.
Well, they would have if we hadn't caught him.
Yeah, you're right.
Yeah, I mean, they were just flat out caught.
Stopped in there and said something about it.
Okay. Next thing we have here to go over. Everybody agrees.
Yep.
This is kind of an annual thing that the Prosecutor's Office does for for township officials and we're invited as as a D C A. Yeah, it's just a middle of the week, middle of the day thing, so most people have jobs can't do it. Um, usually there's some good information there, you know, you can they can choose which which sessions you want to to attend and and all that and so it's uh, I looked at the agenda somewhere. So it says here it is uh, so what you as a township official should know about the twenty twenty four solar solar eclipse? I don't know what that has to do. Yeah, a lot of things we do, but certified public records training, which is required by by the financial officers and trustees, that's. Um, then there's township law update, which is usually pretty pretty interesting. And it says new sheriff in town, so I guess we get to meet the new sheriff. Must be on this and stuff. Then there's an economic economic development update coming in in the afternoon. Uh, so that's. Then at three forty five, it's a whole presentation about overlay districts, which that's the one I want to make sure I go to.
We're familiar with that one, yeah.
I think you guys have go, you probably teach it at this point, you know? Then there's regulations on solar and and wind. There's also. And then there's a.
That could be interesting.
Township fiscal and and other issues, so. Anyways, but that's.
Those last three are running concurrently, so you gotta pick one.
You have to pick one of the three. I will do, I'll do the overlays just to see if there's anything new or different or whatever, but I'm not definitely, I'm not definitely, mainly so I'm not. I'm not following you kind of.
You might know more than they do, I don't know.
Yeah. So anyways, but that's so if you're interested, you go online to the Delaware County Prosecutor's Office and sign up.
Is that um um, list of uh courses online? That's that. Okay.
I believe I think I got off the email I got students.
Oh, I might, I might just take a picture of that.
They didn't have, you talked about it at the last trustee meeting. The Ohio Township Associations, they do a lot of those webinars and and things. And the ones that I wanna go through, the trustees go ahead and pay and I go through those webinars. But next year, they're planning paying a flat rate. Those things are usually like twenty, thirty bucks, sometimes they're fifty depending on what they are. But next year, the township is paying a flat rate and gonna get access to all webinars from the Ohio Township Association and anybody that's with the township can get on and look at those. So next, the next list that I get or the list I get come first year, I'll fire out to you guys. If you guys wanna get on and watch some of those webinars or.
Yeah, I'd be interested in.
Yeah, it's really, it's a good deal seeing as how. I mean, I've always that was only at three and I probably spent two hundred dollars or it's like two hundred and fifty for the whole year for so it was a no brainer.
Okay. Yeah, this. They did have a snack for for breakfast last time, but used to furnish lunch, they don't do that no more. You own your own lunch.
Tight ones.
And a new location with the Big Spee building in on Route two twenty one. I think that's the old. Um, meaning for state schools, what they call the Career Center. They got the old Career Center over by twenty one.
Yeah, somebody came and said the Delaware County changed their engineering department for their permits and everything. It's now he said it's on five twenty one now, I don't know if that's the case or not.
Well, they they've done some work on that building and they're using it for other things now that they call the the Career Center, we're getting down to on the twenty three. They had all that building and made it all of the one one building down there. I just, I didn't know that it happened to go that way. My cousin, I was looking for transmission for G T O and we went by that place. Like, hey. That's where the Chris Center used to be, now that I seen it, but then we changed it over to some other other stuff there. Um, my next thing I wanted to do here. I know not everybody knows the email address. I got a list here, I got. Well, back. Wait, I'm not sure till today, cuz Jason's on air and and Steve is not. So.
Yeah, Kendra's supposed to get me the uh, wait to get a B C A email, right? So I need to follow up with her.
And I say, I don't know what's available, but it's open because there's one. There's there's two missing, so. Wow, is B C A one. Did you know that?
It was mentioned. That doesn't get me to my email, though.
All right, just 'cause you get it doesn't mean you get in there.
Right.
I don't know where to go to get in there, so.
I was gonna talk about that, if we can figure it out. Yeah. Okay. It's B Z A one at Harlem Township dot net. Mike, you're just in Cannon at Harlem Township dot net. You don't have to dot com.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Part of T W P dot com.
T W P. Dot com, dot net.
My thought.
Yeah. Wow, yours is B C A one at Harlem. T W P dot net. Bill? Yours is Harlem. Or yours is uh, B C A six at Harlem T W P dot net. You been on it? You didn't have to get to it, wondered it all over.
I tried.
You tried. That's most likely, you know, we get pride.
Okay.
Yeah, but. Jim? Yours is B C A two at Harlem T W P dot net. You been on it?
I have been on it. It was a act of Congress to get on there. And I saved it. And I check it out every now and then, nobody emails me on that because they email well my other. But I did save it. How to get into, I can't tell you guys, cuz once I saved it, uh, it left my brain. But it was complicated.
Mine is B C A five at Harlem T W P dot net. And uh, I mean, um, Jason Lochner's. Cause he was the chairman when they done this. This is Jake Lochner at Harlem Township, Harlem T W P dot com. So I don't know if he still has access, I mean, he is an alternate, so. I I gotta find out what what's going on with that. Because when he set this up, the chair had had a regular like like yours. And then that's then the other one had the Harlem T W P dot net. And with the B C one, two, three, four, five, six. I don't know how that worked, I don't know it, but so I don't have the complete list that was really resigned and and uh, so that look care of that one, I don't know what what hers was. So, that being said. Something I was giving a long time ago. How to access your your email. And there's things I don't understand, I'm sure you may understand it. But to put it on your phone, you need to build with an I map thing. I've never done that before, so I didn't. Yeah. Uh, if you if you go to your like like your your laptop or whatever, you have to go to mail dot private email dot com. And that let you in, then you put in your 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 B C A whatever and then your password, so I don't know, I had nobody's password, so I can't help you on that part. So if you know what your password was originally, you'd have to have that to get in. So you you remember your password, do you have access to your password or?
That's all saved.
Yeah.
On at home.
It's good.
I check it every now and then, there's nothing on there and I don't know what the password is. I suppose I can go in and find it.
So what we can do, I can do here is I can get rid of this, don't need that.
Yeah, that was an, it took an active God to get in this thing.
That's this is same, my password isn't password.
Not password?
No.
And I got, I remember I kept trying to log in and wouldn't take it, it wouldn't take it, it was, oh, it was just a mess.
Somebody help me get in.
Get in, yeah.
Yeah, well, I called the township. And then they moved me over.
Carol can help you out. Carol's the I T guy and he's quite good. So.
Like I said, I got it saved there and the other time I check it, nobody's sent me anything, so.
The email. So, what I basically did with the private email dot com and then you put on that. And that screen, I went right by because.
Why are we on the audience?
The other camera stopped working and has been frozen for the last.
Oh, they were frozen?
Yeah. Whole first, uh, about twenty minutes of the meeting is frozen solid.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
But we have audio.
They wanted to see you anyways. Huh? They wanted to see you.
Yeah.
Request for the.
I think Karen automatically focuses on the two best looking people in room.
Wow. Marvelous.
Clearly.
Clearly. But but I'd have done my hair better if I'd.
So anyways, I'm at that, it's greened it since I already had my password saved it just when goes right to the email.
Right.
Anyways, and then this is what the email looks like and you get there and the last two I've got been uh, the secretary of the Prosecutor's Office sent out notifications for the the meeting that we're having. So. But as you can see, my camera sent something back in March. Kendra did something in December, so how many emails I got, you know?
Well, I I don't think, so the last time I looked, our information is even on a township website.
Yeah.
I didn't think all the names are on it. The names are there, but there's no contact now.
And so. And I don't see where people we should have to contact us. You know, I mean, they have, I mean, we do goes to right anyways, so.
Yeah, I mean, Keith should probably be on there for administrative.
Right.
But. Guess they want to contact you.
But Jason's on administrative.
Well, that's, but you need to get that off so they they can bug you.
So if you'd have somebody contact you on another account about Harlem Township business, then the law got involved, your other account will be open to.
Yep, it could, it could be subpoenaed in the court, yes.
Yeah, it can be subpoenaed, we just went through one of those. Um, and attorneys are pretty good at getting your own personal stuff out of it. So, I mean, what I did on mine is I just set up folders. Now, if somebody says B C A or strategic planning or whatever, it's all in a folder. And you and you just give them that folder. I mean, unless you're a drug dealer, is doing something really, really nefarious. I mean, that's all they care about.
So my my plan is I'm gonna try to get with Kendra again and see if we can get over and things for that, then. You know.
Well, you know what you could do to make us all get on there? Make sure everybody gets on and everything and then ahead of the meeting, send out the agenda to those emails and see if we can get on and get them off of it. But that's how you could see if it's it's working or something.
But the the thing is, you know, I I don't want to force you to print something at home.
Oh, okay.
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Cause you got the cost of paper and ink and other stuff, you know, so I I was just talking, talking to V G here earlier, I said, I'm gonna try to not print the agenda out then bring it in here and then she has to make copies and I said, you know, I could I can get her email address and stuff, I can email to her a few days ahead of time and she turned out, had ready for time to get here. So then if we get something late last minute, we can write it into the agenda. That's that's why I say approve with flexibility, so we have the flexibility to add or to correct the agenda. Because you don't know what's gonna change in the last minute, so. So I just wanted to give you the information that I had about emails that, you know, what who has what so far. But we need to get that straightened out. Like I said, we should be doing our communication the township email, not our private email. And I did, his name's Carol, right? He did, he put that on my phone. When he did that, took my personal email off my phone.
Oh, no.
So, so I had to, I switched it back. I could probably toggle back and forth, but I need to figure out a way to do that, so. But like, I'll have, we see my personal email and the township email on my phone, but I was the person who came up with the township email and I think I didn't really know that they're gonna change, so it's like, okay, I gotta figure figure this out. Yeah. But like I said, it's kind of been a slow process, so you can forget, get this figured out, but we needed to get get it done. I'd like to have it done by next year. So everybody could start out with that. Uh, planning committee, do anything new, exciting, what's going on?
Yeah, um, getting ready to start the next overlay. Uh, the team will be start working on that tomorrow night. And that's gonna be in the Northwest quadrant. And up by Gleaming. Just before you hit Trent Township. Uh, it'll compromise over five hundred acres. So it's gonna be a nice one, it'll be um, uh, it's gonna be residential. So they're working on that. Um, things of interest going on in Harlem Township, I've noticed that I follow the sales along with everything else, cuz I'm always looking for sales of um, Large tracts of ground or something, somebody doing something. But I also noticed a trend when you're going in different parts of the area. That real estate's a hot item, residential real estate, houses, existing houses, new builds, everything. Is extremely, extremely in demand for Harlem Township. You go into the four, three, oh, eight, one area and it just sits there.
Which is that?
The this residential houses.
No, we're four, three, oh, eight, well, that's southern, southern Westerville. Okay, okay.
Yeah, so we're Delaware County, Westerville, so, but you get into nice neighborhoods. And their stuff just sits there and sits there. Something pops up for sale in Harlem Township, it's gone. And at a high price. So I thought that was just an interesting, you know, people wanting to get close. To the action that need to work there and that type of stuff is. Yeah, it's it's driving it, there was a home, I can't, I'm not gonna give the address. But there was a home. In Harlem Township, I remember when it sold, it was bought by Flippers, did a nice job on it. Nice ranch, did a nice job. The owner bought it a couple years ago for four hundred thousand, it just sold the other day for eight hundred and five. You know what I'm talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah, I went, well, I mean, this stuff is like. You know, good lots, good real estate lots, if it's promoted properly. Uh they go like hotcakes. Uh the ones that the guy just has a overgrown field and stuff, they don't look too good, so, but good lots um. On Harlem Estates. The end lot. Where it has the retention pond on it, let's sell for like four hundred and. Fifty thousand or some ridiculous, as I think, price, but it went quick, the house on the front. Is listed for a million seven. On the front of that. Harlem Township is hot. And it will continue to be hot. And the inquiries coming in are hot. And just to let you guys know, where people say. Interest rates are up, things aren't moving, that is true in all other places. But not here. And a lot of these people already, you gotta realize that they're coming in from California, Chicago, New York, where the average house is a million and a half. And they've sold that and they're coming here, they got a ton of money to put down, if not pay cash. So that's that's another thing that drives it. So that's just a trend that I've watched and watched and watched, and it's not diminishing. It's just, it's just staying at this trend, inventory is way, way down, there's hardly any inventory. So, anyway, working on the overlay, still a hot area. That's basically it.
That explains why. When the auditor sent me my new evaluation on my house.
Oh, yeah, if you didn't get that, bingo, bingo. Like be sure you have a nice drink available when you look it up, if you haven't seen it already, yeah.
Yeah, and we said in a meeting, General and I did last weekend in Sunbury with. Uh with those guys talking about that, and there was, he was bragging about. How he went out and hired an investment manager of investment. Just right off the cuff, because they have two or three hundred and sixty one billion dollars. Access taxes sitting there, they want invested to make more money. Isn't that great?
This puts the name not auditor.
I think Chief told me, Fire Chief. That the township could actually, they have so much money that township can borrow from cheap.
Yes, oh, yeah, they're offering cheap loans.
To government entities inside the county.
Right.
Cause they have all this money.
Bunch of people in Killer Pines are going over to Genoa when their walk-in meeting. To challenge a whole bunch of their properties that went out.
They're gonna challenge them.
I guess my plan, I want to do that, I think, this is my my hundred.
I have done that several times, so I'm somewhat experienced at that. And. By the time you get there, they've already been through the wringer, the committee that you're going before, the board you're gonna go before. So have your ducks in a row. In other words, it has, it has to be meaningful, in other words, you have to have. You don't have to necessarily hire an appraiser if you do your homework, and so we all have G I S and recent sales.
And bring comps with it.
Yeah, you bring your comps and stuff with you. The thing that I would say is the most influential. Is um if you have actually been. Overappraised versus your neighbors. In other words, if everything around you is going for. Two hundred foot, let's say. And for some reason, yours is at two fifty. That is good information and that helps. But if you just go in and say, I don't like it, it's not right. You know, yeah, I get neighbors and say that, oh, I'm gonna go fight them, I said, well, go ahead, what's your, you know. But I, you know, I had to do a lot of research. And mine was, the one I won on my vacant field. Was that I was being appraised at twice what all my neighbors were. That was sort of a walk in.
Right.
You know, I said, oh, okay. I said, what, there's no house on it? And I said, no, there's no house on it, it's vacant ground, oh, we bad.
Well, my, my, you know. My whole thing is looking at. My house was built, and everything else that's been built around me is at least twenty to twenty five years newer. And bigger. And so. I I. Just compare mine with my neighbors, it's kind of hard to do, because I had none of the neighbors when I moved out there.
Yeah.
You know, there was a farm here, a farm here, a farm, you know, like.
You just get caught up in the prop wash.
Yeah, because it basically was, my house was built as the higher hands house to Jackson Farm.
Mm hmm.
I mean, they did, that was the, you know. He built his house next door to his job, you know.
Well, Hanky did say that we had, they were trying to push through uh for our senior citizens that. He said, cuz we know we've got some that aren't gonna be afforded, cuz they're on fixed incomes. He's trying to push through a reduction in that. Uh um than paying how much of their taxes they gotta pay, you know, certain level of seventy, seventy five and eighty. And he says he's figured out that if they give them those kind of reductions, that it it's only like two percent of. The tax money they collect, but Beth, we were fighting it.
Yeah, well, the thing, I I've heard some of that too, and but they're they're wanting to, you gotta be within two hundred percent of a property level of income and and that's. If your taxes, your 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 income can easily over override that.
When your taxes for all income levels, but basically you start off. That property taxes are taking at least half your social security check. And then going up from there. I mean, what kind of relief can they give those people? I mean, it's just, it's rough.
It's terrible. Yeah, I lost half my social security check when I retired. Because I worked in the schools.
Well, that's your double dipper. But you can't qualify.
That's what they wanted to say, but I worked those years for social security, then I worked those years at school, I didn't double, I didn't work them both at the same time.
Yeah.
It's like I wasn't like, you know.
Yeah, I had, I had a buddy at work maintenance for the city of Columbus. The same thing, man, they whacked him. When he went on both of them, they just whacked him. He said, what? Well, that was your problem, you paid taxes.
Yeah. Anyone have anything else to bring to bring up tonight, not weird? Motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
I second.
Pushing the second, all favors the eyes.
All right.
Same signs.
Please.